One nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A number of items here tonight, several proclamations I'd like to start out with. Whereas the 18th Annual BK 5K 5-Kilometer Road Race and Walk is held to honor Bob Kirland, founder of Fastenal Company and lifelong supporter of youth programs. And whereas the race has raised tens of thousands of dollars which are donated through a grant process to local area youth organizations and programs that have demonstrated financial need. And whereas grant funds are evaluated for merit and dispersed by the BK 5K Youth Fund Award Committee in partnership with the Winona Community Foundation. And whereas the BK 5K is hosting a community-wide special registration event at Lake Lodge on Monday, May 7, and Lake Lodge will be open and free to the public during this time from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. And whereas Olympic gold medalist Jessie Diggins will be at the BK 5K registration event with her gold medal to sign autographs, take pictures, and talk with the public about her experiences at the 2018 Winter Olympics. And whereas the BK 5K event committee cordially invites the public at large to meet Olympic gold medalist Jessie Diggins and to register for the BK 5K Road Race and Walk event. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mark Peterson, hereby proclaim Monday, May 7, 2018 as the BK 5K Jessie Diggins Day. And with us tonight is Paul Winsnuski from Fastenal. So I'd like to give you this.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your work.
Another proclamation is whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Winona's scenic beauty. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Winona and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, community events, charity events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas Winona's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. And whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas Bike Month Winona, the league of American bicyclists, schools, city departments, hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2018. And whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. And now therefore, I, Mayor Mark Peterson, hereby proclaim May 2018 as Bike Month in the city of Winona, Minnesota. And I urge all residents to join me in this special observance and to join the mayor's bike ride schedule for May 17. One more proclamation. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting significant numbers of children in Winona. And whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, secure, and free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. And whereas it is our responsibility as adults to protect every child's inalienable right to a safe nurturing childhood. And whereas our community is stronger when people become aware of child abuse and neglect prevention and become involved in advocating, supporting, and sustaining a culture that encourages family and community life where children can develop and flourish in a safe environment, free from all forms of abuse and neglect. And whereas our community faces a continuing need to support community-based programs that prevent child abuse and neglect by strengthening families and providing community support for families. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas residents celebrate children, this community's greatest resource and the community leaders of tomorrow. Now therefore, I, Mayor Mark Peterson, hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Months. Also, I'm appointing the following individuals to the Parks Comprehensive Plan Task Force. I'll read the list of names. Amy Jo Marx, Chong Shirvang, Dan Salmon, Eric Barnard, Aaron Holly, Julie Fassbender, Gabe Erickson, Lou Overhug, Mary Capel, Sandy Villard, and council members Michelle Alexander and Pam Idon. And I want to thank all of them for stepping up and saying yes to serving on this task force, which I think is going to be a really good thing. So thank you for doing that. And two meetings. One I want to mention is tomorrow night. It's a community visioning workshop to create the future vision for a Winona Community Center. And that'll be here at City Hall tomorrow, Tuesday, April 17, starting at 5:30. There'll be a project presentation, 6 o'clock, Visioning Shiret, and from 7:00 to 7:30, Information Input and Networking. And then there's a second meeting that's going to be talking about the Parks Plan. It'll be a public kickoff for that meeting, and that'll be the following Tuesday, April 24, starting at 6 o'clock here at City Hall with a Public Information Input Session and ending between 7:00 and 8:00 with a Visioning Shiret. So plan on attending those important meetings as well. And that, believe it or not, is all I have. So I'll ask the city manager if he has anything.
I do have a few things, your honor. First week of April was dementia-friendly week for the city. And despite the snow that canceled our first event in the week, we had over 220 individuals participate in the various events during the five days. So we want to thank everyone who helped make that such a good event. I also wanted to congratulate our Malia Fox as being selected as one of 30 over 60 to be recognized this Saturday, I'm sure that's a mistype, by the Elder Network for Outstanding Support to Older Individuals in Winona County. So congratulations to Malia for that wonderful honor. And finally, appreciation of Tom Nelson, who, over 30 years of employment here with the city and the engineering department, has finally retired. His final date was April 13, so Tom will be missed greatly by all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idon.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1. Oh, we forgot.
Oh, how could I forget? Sitting in the front row.
Before we do the public hearing.
Yeah, sorry. Harlan Knight and Phil Fighton are here, and they would like to address the council for just a couple of minutes. Sorry, Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. And we have two items tonight. I'll be very brief. The first one involves the miniature steamboat sign that is on the corner of Huff Street and Highway 61. Members of the council and other members of the city staff, over the last several years, we have had a volunteer committee repaint the boat several times. And Jerry Coolis, who has recently passed away in the last 30 days, Jerry and his son, Roger, spent innumerable hours mechanically making the paddle wheel of that boat operate. After a couple of years of trial and error and build and rebuild and engineering, they were successful in putting a solid axle in the paddle wheel, giving it the chain drive, doing a lot of behind-the-scenes mechanical work, which Jerry was very good at. Jerry had one rule. He stayed underground and Roger climbed the ladder. And it worked out real good. And many of you know, the boat is lighted, it operates. We let it operate completely through the winter last year, so we feel very strongly that it is advocates. We developed that it will continue to operate. And tonight, we want to officially turn the vote over to the city of Winona. And I presume the Park Rec Department, who will continue to oversee it. And Jerry needs our prayers. He's passed away, but he and his son did a marvelous job, along with a number of other people. We did the painting, and Larry Stoss, the electrician, did the electrical work, supplied a number of pieces of electrical equipment. And at least a half a dozen or eight other people developed the painting, did a lot of work. So we owe them all a good round of applause and actually our recognition for the work they did on behalf of the city. The second item. Thank you. Thank you. The second item, I'm going to have Harlan Knight come up. In front of you, you all have a picture of Wyndham Park and Griffiths, Winona, in the fountain. That fountain was constructed 25 years ago this summer. Tonight, we want to invite all of you to reserve Saturday, September 20.
22nd.
22nd. Good thing Harlan's here. We're going to have the 25th anniversary of the building of that fountain. Harlan and I were given the charge and the permission to raise the money publicly and to oversee the building of the fountain. And after we finish in September at the dedication, we turn it over to the city of Winona. And I think the Park Rec Department needs a lot of thank you for the work that they've done maintaining that fountain over the years. When Harlan and I first came before the council 25 years ago, I believe the only member on the council then who was here tonight was George Borzakowski.
No, I was not.
Jerry was.
I was not 25 years ago, but I'll take the phrase.
You're dead.
Oh, okay.
We're still going to give you credit.
Okay.
It was your fault.
Thank you.
At any rate, we presented our plan, and the city council said, "Well, that sounds like a good plan. How are you going to get the money? Oh, we're going to raise it publicly." "Geez, that'll take you a couple of years." "No, we think we can do it in 90 days." And with the help of Winonnans, we did do that. And at the meeting that night, 25 years ago, at the council meeting, the mayor, with Norm Endel, Norm said, "I think it's a nice one idea, and I want to be the first one to help. Here's a check for $1,000." Well, Rod Hurd was at that meeting. He was the owner of KWBNO, and he often came to record the happenings at the meetings. He said, "I think it's a good idea too, and I'm going to give you a check. But I don't want to outdo the mayor, so I'm only going to make it for $999."
That would be rough.
And we were off and running. So Harlan, you've got some comments you want to add.
Well, as mayor, council members, when I come, it seemed like an awful long time when I sat, where you're sitting. And Al followed me, and so I know how long you've been on, Al, and you were on before I was. But George and Jerry were fellow council members. And you're still here. Kids are getting old. But thank you for being here. As Phil said, 25 years ago, we started on this project, and it was totally a community project. A lot of volunteer labor, a lot of sweat went into it by various people as it went on. But we were challenged by Floretta Murray, as Phil and I were both on the planning commission, and Floretta Murray was on the planning commission. She challenged us to get that princess out of the weeds, very simply. The princess was in the weeds, the ducks and the pelicans, and the turtles were in an old shack down at the sewage disposal plant. It was terrible. And due to Floretta's challenge and the mayor's council assistance 25 years ago, the park you see today has proven that it was the right thing to do. So anyway, I want to thank the council for sticking with us, the Park Recreation Department for keeping it such a good area. A little story I'm going to tell you about that. The night that we were to dedicate it, somehow or another, it turned out that soap was put into that pool. So here we are, the day of dedication, getting the stuff from Fleet Farm to get the soap out of the pool. And another incident that probably you haven't heard much about, one of the items turned up missing with a turtle.
Turtle.
Turtle came up missing. And Bob Welch's daughter happened to see the perpetrators. The judge told him that that turtle was worth $30,000, and that was quite a fine. So we got the turtle back and everything had been well-sensed. Anyway, thank you for maintaining the parks like you do. You talked about proclamation for the parks tonight. I commend you for that. You also mentioned bicycles, being safe and all that thing. My wife has a bicycle that's over 70 years old. It's still rideable, so it's a good thing you've done that too. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate all you guys have done to help with this project. Is there something in specific going on on the 22nd?
At the 22nd of September, we will be celebrating the 25th anniversary of the fountain construction and opening. And the Park Rec Department has reserved Wyndham Park for the entire day.
What are the hours for that, Phil?
Have you figured that out?
Oh, okay.
Definitely did it for the entire day. Probably in the middle of morning.
Okay.
If that works for everybody, great. We invite all of you to attend. We expect to have several hundred people. And I think it's a real celebration to feel good about and to follow too. Thank you for all of your support. And if somebody comes up to you, a volunteer, and do the job, let them do it. They'll get it done.
That's good advice.
The public is to be commended for their financial support. $100,000, 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And now we will go to the required public hearing, item 2.1. It's a proposed 2018 Hamilton Street reconstruction project, which will be Hamilton Street from Broadway to Howard.
Clear the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak. Anybody here wish to speak to the proposed 2018 Hamilton Street reconstruction project? One more time, anybody here wish to speak? All right, hearing none. Clear the public hearing closed. Ask for a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Sorry, George.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Discussion, George?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I think I left word with Brian to pass on to you. There's been some discussion on the trees. Would any of those trees be able to be saved? I know we had a meeting down, and Paul was there about, and I think Pam showed as well too, I think late last fall or middle of summer. And the trees was one of the biggest concerns.
It always is. Typically, the larger trees are not be able to be saved because working in the curb and gutter cuts out the roots, and they'll eventually die. They won't die immediately, but they'll die eventually, or they're weak towards the house. So a lot of them, most of the larger trees will be gone, the smaller ones will remain. And then we're planting about one and a half times as many that are taken out. So a lot of trees are going back in, and we're going to go in with a real diversity again of trees to avoid what we're going through right now.
Then will people as well, once the road is opened up, would they have an opportunity to replace their sewer line if they so choose to do it?
Yes, if they will do that.
Okay. Paul?
Last year, the north end of that street was reconstructed, and we got pretty late into the season. And is this going to be, you know, an October overlay again, or are we going to be able to get this in before the snow flies?
We never try to be that late. I mean, that's not our goal. So we will do everything we can to get it done sooner than that, and we expect it to be done sooner than that.
Okay, anything else? Not all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
Under the petition's request in Communications, item 3.1, is the 2018 Steamboat Days Agreement for June 13 through the 17. And Ryan is here. The president is here, if you have questions.
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution. I second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam.
Ryan Bueller from the Winona DAC.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
My name's Ryan Bueller. I'm the president for the 2018 Winona Steamboat Days Celebration. Our proposal is pretty much the same as it's been in years past. There really isn't any major differences. The layout and the format should pretty much all be the same. Some big additions for us this year are the Human Cannibal and the U.S. Marine Corps Marching Band. Otherwise, everything else is pretty much the same. Are there any questions in regards to this year event?
Well, I just have a comment. I looked at the proposed lineup of events, and I looked up the, what is it, the scissorets?
Yeah.
Drum and drum and drill corps.
Drum and drill corps.
Yes.
Drum corps.
Yep, that looks like a great one. I look forward to all of these.
Well, thank you. Yeah, Fred here spends quite a bit of time, set most of that up, and we appreciate it. Thank you for the feedback.
Yeah, the scissorets were here maybe three years ago. They put on a show down at Center and Second. This year, they'll be in the Merchants Bank parking lot. Last year, we had the South Shore. They didn't show up. They said their bus broke down, but they never called us. But this group has been pretty good, and they're coming in Saturday, putting a show on at 8:00 down at Merchants Bank parking lot. And then they're in the parade. They're going to be at the end of the parade this year because this year, leading off the parade, as Ryan mentioned, is the United States Marine Corps Marching Band. I've been trying for 10 years to get them. We finally got them. This isn't a small group. This is one of the major three marine bands in the United States. They're out in New Orleans, Louisiana. We finally got a yes letter from about a month ago. So all the planning is in going ahead now. The High Woff Valley Marines are going to host them formally, and they're coming in on Saturday. They're going to do a pork chop feed at the American Legion Club. They'll do a meet and greet there. I know it's going to be just packed because they're inviting all the legion posts and the VFW posts within 50-mile radius to come also to meet this very talented group. They're wearing their dress blues, and we've got a drum major that's unbelievable. They've got a guy in the band that's going to sing the National Anthem this year at the judges' stand, and they're going to perform as our pre-parade. They start 15 minutes before the parade. Now, not only that, this year, we have another military band coming. We have the United States Army 34th Infantry, which is also going to be here. They're going to start off the parade. They're going to be the number-one unit of parade after the pre-parade starts. So we're getting an influx of military units, which we never, ever had like this before. And as Ryan mentioned, the Human Cannibal is going to be back. They haven't been here for, what, 10 years later? 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, 80, 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, 86, 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 97, 98, 99, 100. Yeah, they're going to be there three nights, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Shows at 7:00 and 9:00. Those three nights. So we got a pretty good lineup this year. We're putting a lot of money into the festival for the community, and I hope we get continued support. I know we get it from the city. I mean, it's unbelievable, the support we get from the police, the fire, the Park Rec, and the street department compared to other big cities. And I want to thank the city of Winona for really helping us and coming out to support us. And other questions?
Michelle has.
No questions. I just wanted to thank you and your committee. I know that this is something people look forward to every year, and it's 76, 77 years? How many years is it?
71st.
71st?
Yep.
It's amazing that it's been going on that long. And I know that my nieces and nephews beg, wonder, ask me constantly once the sun comes out and the snow melts, when the carnival's coming back, so.
They'll be anxious.
Yeah, they're anxious though, so I appreciate all the work you do. I know, I can only imagine the amount of hours you put in, so something to look forward to.
I hope they will too this year.
It will.
You're just full of sunshine.
All right, well, thank you for all that you do, and I think we have a motion and a second here, so. George? Oh, I'm sorry, George has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, just to piggyback with anyone else, you know, thank you for all you do. I work with people that are involved in Steamboat Days Parade. They take a week off of work to help prepare for all this and work it and clean up afterwards. So you're definitely a very dedicated bunch.
Well, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it. We do have quite a few members, so I'm glad you should have asked that, I think.
You bet.
And you have fun doing it too, I think, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Mayor? Yes.
Just to have a, just a really, really minor technical details on page 7 and 8 of our exhibit. This is Exhibit A. We talk about specific requests. It's really minor. It's the spelling of Gunderson.
Oh.
It should be S-E-N instead of S-O-N. That carries over to page 8 as well.
That's mine, but you can spell that.
Well, it's a common one. And then on page 7, on item 5, the parking lot 9 at Levin, your godfather's, I would say probably describe that as the former location of Godfather's, just to be, you know, accurate. But that no way demeans what you and the group have been doing for our community for all of these years. And hear about these plans is very exciting and looking forward to a wonderful event as councilperson. Like Alexander said, hopefully, snow will be gone by then. Thank you, Mayor.
Are you ready to vote? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same side. Carrie's.
And item 3.2 is a request for the licenses for the 2018 Steamboat Days Festival, including the temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license, the temporary on-sale 3-2 malt liquor license, and the carnival license.
Make a motion to approve that license.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Carrie's.
And item 3.3, skip one there, is the request for temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for St. Mary's University Homecoming on June 23.
Make a motion to approve that license.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. Opposed? Kerry's?
Request for temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for the Polish Cultural Institute for May 5th.
Move to approve that license.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? George?
No Polish words to pronounce this time.
They've learned, George, that we are not capable.
All right. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Kerry's?
Item 3.5 is the Minnesota Beethoven Festival Free Concert Street Closure Request for Sunday, July 15th.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Paul?
Are they going to perform at the band show? Or where are they going to actually perform? Or do they set up their own?
Well, they set up a tent by the band show. Behind the band show.
Wow. Great.
It's amazing. Anything else? Al?
Minor correction on the request 3.5. It talks about the lake park closed to traffic on Sunday, July 15th, 2017. I'm sure we can correct that to the current timeframe.
Good catch. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Item 3.6 is a request to close Lake Park Drive by Windcraft on Saturday, July 28th.
I make a motion to approve that request and also move it to the appropriate year.
Right.
I'm just going to get it.
Motion was by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Item 3.7 is a request by the Winona Area Catholic Schools PTP Committee to close Zumbro Street between 4th and 5th on Friday, May 25th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kerry and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Item 3.8 is a request for the Winona International and Sprint Triathlon, known as Trinona, on June 9th and 10th.
Make a motion to approve that license.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Kerry. Discussion, Paul?
Just to see, the organizers are here. Opportunity, Scott, to say something. Do you need volunteers? Now it's time to follow.
State your name and address, please.
So, my name's Scott Sherman, 631 Leaking Street, Winona.
Who's the other one?
He wants to hold it there.
That was after we purchased Trinona.
Yeah, so we've taken over Trinona from Dave Shute and are basically following his game plan as far as we can with adding a little local player to that. Again, we're using Livel in Winona to help bring volunteers to the platform as well. Of course, we appreciate all of your help throughout the year. Patrick and the Park and Rec this year has helped us enormously. And then, also, all the local volunteers, that's really what helps make this race happen each year. Without it, it would not exist. So, I just want to convey that and let everybody know that we're local and independent, and we are looking forward to making this race last as long as we can for the foreseeable future.
Okay, Michelle?
I just want to say, I was very happy to see local. People had purchased and are running it. There's something a little bit different when the people are local. No offense to Lifetime when they ran it, but it lost something when the shoots were gone. And I think that'll come back. And it's a great event. I think it's fun to participate, fun to watch. The kids love it. So, I'm glad to see you guys taking over, even with Harrison.
Definitely need volunteers, of course, to sign up through Livel, as well as getting there through our website, trinona.com. And of course, we need participants as well. But we're doing good. We got 307, and I would say it's pretty good for the weather we've been having. So, another one question I get is, is that, well, ice up the lakes? Water's going to be cold on race day. But we figure the colder it stays, the less weeds. So, that's something we can last for weeds. Thank you for your support.
Okay.
Al? A couple of questions. You are Driftless Sports LLC?
Correct, I am, technically, yes.
Okay, I mean, you know, the agenda item didn't have Driftless Sports, and the agreement does. So, just to clarify that. Also, we've had in the past kind of a map of, you know, where everything has been going. And I didn't see it in the council packet. I assume it's almost identical to previous years.
We'll have zero changes this year in terms of what's being done in the city for Trinona. The kids' drive-alon is changing a little bit off at St. Mary's, but that's on their property. These are the only course changes that we could have.
Okay. And just a procedural thing on page 12 of the agreement. Item 20 on road closures. I noticed there's kind of a, I don't know, glitch in my council packet that has some words that were printed over. I really don't know what that is, if it's material to the agreement. I'd like that explained. If not, I'm happy going, you know, going forward with this.
I would just note for the council, the original, that they did sign, did print out correctly. It looks like a couple spaces were just taken out there. I'm not sure.
Okay. You know, just so we are clear on what the agreement states and anything like that, it's fine. And congratulations on the addition of your family.
Thank you.
Anything else? Let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Thank you.
Item 3.9 is the Farmer's Market License Agreement.
Make a motion to direct staff to execute the agreement. Second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Anybody here from the farmer's market? Any questions?
One question. Yes. So, when will the farmer's market, or will the farmer's market be moving to the foot of Main Street again? It's traditional.
Rightful. Chad, do you have an answer?
Mayor and council, I'm not sure. The discussion with farmer's market this year again was with the weather delays we've had. They prefer not to do a mid-season move, so they chose to go to Midtown again this year. So, I, all assumptions, I guess, I would say 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Item 3.10 is a request for after-hours use of Gov. Heights on June 1st and 2nd.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? Paul? Oh, okay, sorry. Anybody? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Item 3.11 is a request for the movies under the Star Series on May 5th, June 16th, July 28th, and August 25th.
Make a motion to approve that request for outdoor movies.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Kerry. Discussion? Al?
I just recommend Coco. It's a wonderful movie, and grandchildren love it. And I won't give away the plot.
You would?
I won't give away the plot.
No, it's good.
I know how it ends. I'm not going to tell anybody.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Under Unfinished Business, Item 4.1, Supery Island Campground Camp Store Agreement Revised. This would allow the contract to, or to contract with independent vendors for programming, performances, and equipment.
I'd make it a motion to rescind the motion from April 2nd of 2018 and to execute this camp store agreement that's in front of us tonight. Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Michelle?
I'm just wondering, it sounds to me like you want to offer rental services from there, which might make it a little easier from the public's perspective. Instead of having to go to WSU, you're hoping to offer the similar services for kayaking and canoeing, that they can come right to the office there and purchase?
Yes, we're, we're looking at setting up, I think, in the next item, we'll talk about it a little bit. But within the campground, having that equipment available there so that the public and campers can have access to that equipment. And I think Prairie Island has an access point unlike anywhere else in Winona. You have that ability to get into the backwaters there in a very calm setting. So, novice even amateurs can experience that. You can do the light, the navigating, the backwaters. I think we get a lot of wildlife, things like that. WSU having a wonderful cache of equipment. Additionally, being able to, in our original, our proposal, that we said we'd like to work with educational institutions. And this is also providing them that opportunity to do exactly what that degree does at Winona State, teaches them in the outdoor rec to how to offer this equipment, how to, you know, properly, they're trained, all these things that I think are just great collaboration.
And does that mean your store would have regular hours that would allow families that might be out there with the dogs to come get water or snacks?
Absolutely.
That was just a question I got after we voted on this new agreement. People were like, well, does that, is the store open? I said, I think it's open to the public.
Yeah, I think also a beautiful thing about this, if it isn't even right at the store, the station, with mobile technology these days, we're able to actually offer something right there at the station where this equipment is, you know. You can have water, snacks available there periodically.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Jamie. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Item 4.2 is a license agreement with WSU Outdoor Recreation Center to place trailers of canoes, kayaks, and paddleboards at Prairie Island Park.
I'd make a motion to approve that agreement and authorize the city manager to execute. Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Paul?
So, I'm not sure if outdoor rec from WSU is here, but maybe Jamie can answer this. So, I'm just a little curious about...
Eric is here.
Is Eric here?
Hello?
There's Eric. Thanks. I didn't see you hiding kind of back there. So, I'm just curious about, it sounds like we all have two sets of equipment out there. And you've had the discussion with Jamie, and this is all going to work out fine. It's how, I was kind of curious how this will work.
Yeah, we've already worked through all the legalities of it and the insurance and all that. That's all set. And just the final details. If this is passed, it's essentially going to be our equipment there partnering with Roadport Management. But it won't be two separate things, but they're, they're revenue sharing to a mile. So, just removing more roadblocks for community members. So, then, you don't have to be a camper either, is the thing. So, if somebody, even the public, wants to come and get a boat, this will now become the water sport, like the paddling sports hub for Winona. Besides, besides the lake, and the plan is for this to be a next step for the lake and the public members as well.
Michelle?
I'm really excited about that. I think WSU for partnering. And I think, I don't know if it was five or seven years ago when they opened up those trails and took a bunch of us out in canoes. I didn't really realize how accessible it is for new beginners, and then, the amount of wildlife. Completely safe environment for families. Most of the places, if you fall, you can touch. I mean, this really excites me for the community as a whole. Because I did see a barrier there. I mean, I appreciated WSU offering, but not everyone would be able to go get a canoe and then get it down there. So, this, to me, is...
Well, it's a huge risk management issue, too, when you have people who aren't familiar with scrapping canoes and paths and paddling their car.
Driving.
And the backup. Or if you want to ride your bike up to Prairie Island.
Yep.
You can now ride your bike and lock it up and go paddling.
I'm very excited about this. This was one of my things I saw in there, that it's kind of that move in the right direction. I think it's great.
Al? Couple of questions. This is something that has been at Prairie Island in the past, I assume, by the spillway area?
So, in the last three years, we've gotten permission from you all to have trailers out there to bring in roadblocks so people could just come and get a PFD and a paddle rather than all of that with a boat. Plus, about 98% of all of our water-based programming that we do educationally and with the community runs out of that spot. Because, like you said, the risk management there for paddling, there's almost no current. Plus, there's all legal stuff. You can paddle the sea in the wild, and that's amazing. So, it's really one of the sweet spots for paddling in here.
Given your history, have you, have you come up with any numbers of folks that have been using those facilities?
I would say we do track those numbers. I have them ready. But I'd say over the last three years that we definitely could pass the 10,000 participant day.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, there's times where, you know, for example, in, in June, we'll have a single day, but we'll have 60 participants come up for a paddling event. We use the whole space, too. So, we'll do programs for land-based team building, group facilitation for two hours. And then, half the group goes paddling, and the other half switches. So, that we don't have 50 people in the backwaters. That'd be a huge human impact so that they can get a more well-rounded experience than just paddling.
I guess I'm kind of referring to like the general public. I mean, you say you have programs. Are these students that are participating in the programs? Or is...
It's a mix. So, our operating model is generally speaking during the academic year, we focus on the Winona State community. And then, during the summer season, it's almost all community-based. So, those student groups that come, we're talking about high school groups. We've always got groups, a lot of schools, because schools are still there until, you know, June. So, we get a lot of their field trips. They're coming from Jefferson Elementary, Arcadia, Lusin Altera as well. So, we try to hit all the demographics from, you know, children to retired.
I support the program and the motion, and just add some questions about it.
Okay, thank you.
I think data collection is really important the next few years for all of our programming that we do out there so that we can start to build the case for, you know, what's really working and what needs to be tweaked or dropped.
Provide material for grants as well.
Exactly. That's a good point.
Additionally, for us at the store, the software program that we use to manage the entire campground also manages our sales. So, we sell rentals that is categorized, that's an item within there. So, we know exactly how many people have rented these pieces of equipment. Additionally, they have a management software that manages their actual equipment. So, they know every single time this video goes out, those numbers are there. So, I think in the future, we're going to have really good data.
Not only good for tracking, but also for liability issues, too, I'm sure.
I'd like to add that there is the mountain bike trail that is being worked on out there that is also considered a novice-type entry. So, I think this is such a phenomenal place to get people entered into the wilderness out there at so many levels. So, it's great. And I've been contacted by a couple of schools already who want to bring large groups of students out there for camping, canoeing, biking experiences already.
John Latch would be proud.
Yes, he would. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry's?
Under New Business, Item 5.1, is the application for the second year for the Transit Service Expansion Grant. This would go from July 1st to this year to June 30th of 2019.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Discussion? Paul? Discussion, Paul?
So, one of the things I'm curious about is, is it possible that, that this bus could make a scheduled stop daily or two at the Amtrak Bus Depot to drop off and pick up passengers from the train and deliver them to our lodging destinations in Towne?
Do we have passengers that come in each day?
Well, we certainly do. We have, we have, we have two stops daily with passengers disembarking, one southbound and one northbound. And so, it would be an opportunity, you know, offer them transit service to get to lodgers that we have in Towne, whether they be a bed and breakfast or one of our hotels. And just something that would enhance the space and the depot and accommodate the passengers that are getting off the train.
Or the bus is still running and on the northbound?
Seven forty-five, so it's the evening.
Seven forty, PM?
Yeah.
No.
No, we stop at six?
The morning is ten, ten to eleven, twelve, one.
Yeah.
But, so the afternoon, so the, the southbound, at least there is one opportunity and even given the fact that unfortunately, it tends to not be on schedule very often for them to, you know, get it, get a ride when it comes in.
Maybe Monica, you could look into this and get back to the council about it.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item five point two is the orderly annexation request with Wilson Township for the Brenner property.
I'd make a motion to accept the annexation with the two attachments of the map and the petition.
Second that. Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion? I guess I'd like to say thank you to the Wilson Township and their willingness to cooperate in this manner. Anybody have anything? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sign? Carries?
Item five point three is the tree crew stamping.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Michelle?
I commend that tree crew for, for doing all of the work they've done with four people. They absolutely need the fifth. Holy support it. I hope it's helpful. Again, I cannot believe four people have been dealing with all of the trees in our community. So, yes, take the fifth person.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item five point four is the Visit Winona Live at the Levy Event Agreement for June twenty-fourth.
Make a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager and clerk to execute.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Michelle?
I would just ask if we can make sure that we get Main Street involved in this celebration and congratulations on the fifty thousand dollars to put on a very nice event in the city of Winona. I mean, I'm sure that's all to the, the skill of the two grant writers, but also to the very good work you do at Visit Winona, because I'm sure Explorer Minnesota could have given that money to a dozen other places and it's only credit to you, Pat, that, that they would have selected Winona. So, thank you for applying for that.
Michelle, Main Street is involved?
Okay, great. I just had heard from them that, yeah, I just heard from them prior to this, I think, that they weren't sure what was happening, so thank you, Lee.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item five point five is the Historical Society Loan Agreement for the Civil War-era cannon and library artifacts. Make a motion to direct the city manager and clerk to execute the attached loan agreement.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. I will abstain because of my association with the Historical Society, but I, who knew we had a Civil War Confederate cannon here in Winona just till recently?
Do we keep it at City Hall or where do we?
No, it's at, it's at the Franklin Street Maintenance Shed over there in a pile and we had a Civil War reenactor buff approach the Historical Society with the whole history of the cannon and it's fascinating actually and the society, I know, looks forward to having it there for the public to enjoy it. Al?
And maybe, Mark, you can answer the question. One of the items that apparently is in a box that contains a number of arrowheads and so forth talks about plummets and obsidian rock. I assume plummets are plum bobs?
I think they're for weights for netting, fish.
Original, okay. Plum bobs are, you know, surveying tools.
Right, yeah, this is for, this is for weighting down nets.
Okay. Interesting. I look forward, hopefully, to see them on display eventually.
Oh, that cannon that we're talking about, is that the one that was down by the levy many years ago?
At one time it was. This cannon is only a part of a cannon. The cannon itself blew up, a celebration, a Fourth of July celebration, I think, many, many years ago, probably a hundred and twenty, twenty-five years ago.
I don't remember that.
It was also, it was also, you weren't on the council then.
Jerry was.
Jerry was here, but Jordan wasn't there yet.
It also blew, some guy both of his hands off. I think it was during the celebration for Benjamin Harrison's election as president and his...
I remember that.
Jerry was there.
Well, then, let's not shoot that one off, Mark.
No, I don't think we're gonna be firing it.
Or at the levy.
Yeah, I think it was live at the levy.
Start war with Wisconsin, I don't know.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Al. You know, I just wanted to make it clear that this is for a thirty-year agreement basically.
Yep.
So, everybody is aware of that, but I'm sure it will be renewed. It's a provision that has renewals in it, but so we're all aware of it. I think it would be in good hands either way for however long the agreement is.
George will still be on the council.
Maybe Jerry too.
Maybe Jerry.
Yeah, I support the motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstains.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with Al.
Thank you. We've had a lovely Facebook posting for the Winona ambassadors who have been in Japan for a while and they're probably getting ready to return pretty soon, so they'll be surprised when they get back to see it's still winter. But again, we can't thank the hosts at our sister city of Misata, Japan enough to give our ambassadors that wonderful experience as, as the ambassadors from Misata will experience when they arrive here in October. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Al. Jerry?
Nothing this evening.
Michelle?
I'm just gonna say thank you to the street crew. I can't believe that they were able to get the roads as clear as they were. They were out working hard all weekend, so great job. And then just let everyone know that we have our Polish sister city coming in the beginning of May, May fifth, they will be here for a few days.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, May fifth, they will arrive and...
That's institutional day.
That's exactly right. And there will be a banquet honoring the Chikinowski family. Tickets are on sale at Midtown Foods and at the Polish Museum. That's going to coincide with their visits, I guess, every year, the Polish choose and honoree or a family to honor, and this year it's the Chikinowski family. So, just if you want to meet our Polish sister city mayor and their version of what a county administrator would be, both elected, they will be here with their spouses. And I believe there will be opportunity for council members to meet them as well, should you choose.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Well, that celebration is usually the first Saturday in May, so I presume that's the one that we're all talking about, so.
Absolutely, yep.
That's when George dances around the meadow, or anything?
Well, later at night.
Kim?
I would like to remind everyone that on April twenty-first, Earth Day, there's going to be quite a few activities going on at the East End Recreation Center. Come on down anytime from ten until two. There's a lot going on, including an exhibit from Healthy Lake Winona. As you know, this is a volunteer group, a public group, that is focused on making Lake Winona as good as it can be. And since Lake Winona is at the center of one of our big primary parks in Towne, it's important to maintain it. Also, the day after Earth Day on the twenty-second, there will be an Earth Day cleanup, starting at one o'clock. Meet down at the Franklin Street Boat Landing and bring your gloves and we'll spend a couple hours bruising up the park and getting, getting the season off to a good start. That's all.
Paul?
I have nothing this evening.
George?
Okay, thank you. Again, the snow plowing, as was mentioned, very, very good job this weekend. I've seen people, I've seen it myself, no matter what street to go down, there was a snow plow. So, they were definitely out and a job well done. Also, I'd just like to acknowledge the USO show that was here last week. It was wrote and directed by Jim Vrakota and he did a very, very good job, as did all of the cast that were in their program. Well, well put on, well done, and thank you to them. And also, congratulations to Aaron Rapinski. He is the Winona Tourism Rockstar and also his business received the Visit Winona People's Choice Award for two thousand and eighteen. And to Tim Gloszewski, co-owner of Lakeview Drive-In, for partnering with Visit Winona.